Still in the matter of the King on the application of L R and Coventry City Council.
Yes, Mr. Cooper.
My lordship, I appear on behalf of the opponent with my own friend Miss Sekon. And uh my own friend Miss Aloma appears for the local authority, the respondent Coventry City Council. My, my lord, if I can just introduce the appeal in this way, it's pursuant to the order of Earl Justice Snowden. As a rolled up hearing.
Yes, well, can I pick you up immediately on what you said? Can you introduce the appeal? Um, no, because you haven't yet got permission. And it, it seems to us that we ought to decide first.
Yeah.
Whether you should have permission to appeal. And the threshold for that is that we must be satisfied we have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
That's Lake and Lake.
Yeah.
And if we do have jurisdiction, whether we should, whether it's a case which is. Academic for the family concerned, but nevertheless, we should exercise a discretion to proceed. And at this stage, we don't want to hear arguments on the merits. That comes later if you get permission.
I understand.
That's all right.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm very grateful for that um um indication. Uh my lord, so on that basis then, perhaps the preliminary matters to consider our jurisdiction. Whether we can appeal and.
Oh, forgive me for interrupting. I should have said at the beginning, but uh and the anonymity.
Oh.
Order must of course remain.
Yes.
Having said that, it would be helpful, at least to me, if you could refer to people as the appellant or the appellant's mother. Rather than having to remember which initials um apply to which people.
I'm grateful, my lord. So in relation to the issue of jurisdiction or whether we can appeal. Um, your lordship will be aware of the case law that's been referred to by the parties and. Lake and Lake is obviously the original case that the lower judge referred to. In his um judgment where he indicated that because of the fact of having succeeded in quashing the assessment. We couldn't appeal further and um like uh our submissions in relation to that term. On the extent to which the position has changed since Lake and Lake. To the extent that there's more flexibility as to when a party can appeal. If they've won on some issues but lost on others. And what we submit is that we are in that territory where. Because we lost on some significant issues of relevance to us. Despite winning on quashing an assessment, there is still jurisdiction for this court to entertain an appeal. And we've made reference in the skeleton to some of the case law. Uh that's relevant to that term, obviously, in particular Curtis, the London Rent Assessment Committee.
Yes.
And um the case of M B Islington, which is perhaps more closer in terms of circumstances. Because it was a Schedule Three case where the opponent was successful in relation to quashing. The uh assessment, but sought further remedies from the Court of Appeal. In relation to the scope of what relief um could be obtained. So in relation to our case, if I can just summarise it in this way. Um, the situation is one where clearly the assessment was challenged. But in, in relation to that, there was also a challenge in relation to Article Eight. And there was a challenge in relation to the question of statutory interpretation. And whether the judge had been correct on the approach to the restricted category, which was. The point that he, he had specifically noted when granting permission in order for it to be addressed. So the outcome of the appeal, oh sorry, of the um claim was that the. Assessment was quashed on basis of other grounds, misdirection in law and irrationality. But we didn't succeed on our Article Eight point and we didn't succeed on the statutory interpretation point.
Point you have to meet is that in reality. You've got all that you could have hoped for from the judge in terms of an order. And there aren't going to be any further proceedings. Contrast Curtis where the. Uh appellant wins on a procedural point. The case has to go back to the Rent Assessment Committee, so the court is in effect. Being asked to say, well, unless you deal with the points of substance as well. They'll make a hash of it second time round and we'll just be back next year.
Yeah.
With a lot more cost and delay.
Right.
And it may be said M and Islington is similar.
My lord, I understand that, but in relation to this case and the situation that's arisen. The question of statutory interpretation that the judge has made going forward. Is of some relevance um for persons in the position of the appellant. I accept because I've got the, the other dimension to this case, which is the fact that they've got leave to remain now. It doesn't have, like your lordship is pointing out, the onward effect that the Curtis and Rent Assessment Committee case had. So um it doesn't have that onward effect, I accept. Um. But the point in terms of its resolution. Is relevant in terms of what had happened to the family and the assistance they were provided. And the Article Eight point is a discrete point about what had happened to them at that time. Which obviously was resolved against us and just thinking aloud, if it had been successful. The consequence of that at its highest would have been um a declaration of a breach. And then any consequential um. Uh um uh uh litigation in relation to damages.
I mean, at the moment, you've got an order quashing the assessment.
Yeah.
And I think if you look at your appellant's notice, you're not asking for anything other than the quashing of the assessment. Um, so if your appeal succeeded, what relief would you get?
If, if the appeal succeeded, the relief would be um a question of the. Declaration in relation to the statutory interpretation point, which is now, I accept, historical for this case. And it would be um an Article Eight declaration if that were um applied.
I'm not actually sure that the appellant's notice asks for such a declaration. Never mind that in a way, but, but the declaration that you were asking for seems to me in effect. Declaration, the judge got it wrong.
On, on our, on, on the issue that we're appealing.
Yes. Um, which you say would be guidance for future courts and future cases.
That's as far as I can put it in terms of the trajectory of this.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Cooper, can I just place this in the context of what was actually being sought? By way of remedy in the High Court.
Yeah.
Because that might likely said shapes the question of whether you actually obtained everything you were asking for. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I, I don't want to set any hairs running, but.
No.
In, in the core bundle of Tab eighteen. Uh is the statement of facts and grounds in the administrative court.
Yeah.
Final page, page twenty-three into page two nine nine of the bundle.
Yeah.
Sets out the various relief that you were seeking.
Yeah, that's right.
And one of them, like sub paragraph three, was damages for breach of E C H R rights. So I, I may have misunderstood your submission two minutes ago, but is it your submission that. If you had succeeded on the Article Eight side, you would then. Be uh at least entitled to ask for just satisfaction under section eight of the Human Rights Act. Wouldn't necessarily get it, but you, you could at least attempt to obtain damages. And therefore, is it your submission that the remedy you've obtained so far is not in fact the complete. Extent of the remedies that you were seeking and you could in theory obtain.
Yes, because that, i- i- if one looks at the terms of the relief sought, that was a discreet aspect of the relief, which we didn't achieve. Because of the negative uh conclusions on Article Eight. I accept that damages is a question in theory, um but it was part of the aspect of, of the claim.
That, that, that would then, if you're right about that, and I'm not saying you are. That would then suggest that the correct analysis of what's happened is that. It could be said this court has jurisdiction and Lake and Lake is not a fundamental problem. But you may still have a fundamental problem that the appeal has become academic.
Yeah, yeah. Um, my lord.
I mean, maybe it doesn't matter, but can we just look at what you asked for in your appellant's notice?
Sorry, yes.
Page twelve bundle. You're not suggesting you should get damages.
My lord, I'm looking at page twelve, section nine.
Yes.
Looking at um ch- challenge to grounds one A and B.
Well, if you, if you look at it, unless we're looking at something different. What you say, what you want the order varied to include um. Uh, uh, a challenge to the assessment is granted in addition to the claim being granted under two and three. So in effect, you're saying, well, the judge quashed the order for the reasons he gave. Um, we think it should be quashed for these additional reasons, but you're not saying you want damages.
No, my lord, that's, that's not explicit, but one B is what was the subject matter of the Human Rights case.
Yes, no quite, you wanted it quashed for that, those reasons too. You don't see what damages for it.
No, not, not, not in that section, but that goes back to what one B is, is referred to. My, my lord, I think I can take that aspect of this any further in terms of. And say in relation to. Why we say there is scope for an appeal.
Well, um. If, if you're right, or if Lord Justice Singh is right, that possibly. The. Um, failure of the judge to. Make a finding of breach of convention rights with. An award of money by way of just satisfaction. That confers jurisdiction in the Lake and Lakes sense. The next hurdle, as he points out, is, is cases such as Salem. In the House of Lords or more recently Dole and the Court of Appeal. As to whether the, where, for the individual appellant. The proceedings are academic because in truth, you can't do any better.
Yeah.
Um, whether um nonetheless the courtroom here, the case.
That, my lord, that, that's right, and that's really down to whether the court considers. It should exercise any discretion for that purpose and depending upon the circumstances in the case. I obviously immediately accept that because of the grant of leave to remain in August um of this year. That changed uh in a positive way, the circumstances for this family. But um that transition period has taken quite a long time in terms of the benefits of leave to remain. And that's still outstanding at the moment, uh in some respects, in terms of their welfare provision. But in terms of the question of where we are now, in the immediate sense, it is academic. In the sense that they don't need the same support that they did seek before. So it's really a question for the court to consider whether it's appropriate. For the case to continue very much in the Salem and Dole sense of if there is any value for the court. To consider the issues. And in relation to that, um. What I can say is, is that there are three points that we raise. In relation to the legal issues, one of which is the statutory interpretation point on Schedule Three in paragraph three. Which has some significance beyond this, this appellant herself. Obviously, you're not now dealing with um the concrete circumstances of a live case in terms of how that works. But that's one aspect in relation to the question of the court's discretion.
I- is it implicit in what you say that you wouldn't suggest that the Article Eight point should be pursued? Further on that sort of discretionary basis?
Well, my lord, on Article Eight, if there hasn't been a resolution. The question is, where can there be a resolution now, or as in a, 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 an appellate resolution? Or a remedy for the appellant of the claimant in these circumstances? So if it's the end of the road for the Article Eight point here. The only other option that would be available now, if that is a consequence of exhausting domestic remedies. Would be an application to Strasbourg.
And I see the way you put that, just on the specific point, you say, well. If, if um matters are essentially academic so far as this family is concerned. Um, the court nevertheless has a discretion and you point out that the statutory interpretation point might have wider significance. The Article Eight point is very fact dependent, isn't it?
Yes, it is. My lord, I don't think I can add anything further to.
Mr. Alomar, what do you say on jurisdiction and discretion?
My lordship, my lord, our position is that um the court um should not. Um accede to the application for permission on the basis that there is in fact no jurisdiction to hear the appeal. And my lord, Lord Justice Singh is referred already to um the application. Um, the orders that were sought in the statement of um facts and grounds. Um, in fact, when one looks at the claim that was issued, and that's at page two seven two of the um bundle. The core bundle. The N four six one. Um, the relief sought is in identical terms. Those were the orders that were being sought at first instance. And those were the orders um that the um judge at first instance engaged with. So we respectfully submit that what we're dealing with here is a case which falls squarely within the parameters of Lake and Lake. It's an appeal against reasons. And, and we say that there is really um nothing with respect in the authorities um cited by the appellant. Which really um addresses the, the basic point in Lake and Lake. It has to be an appeal against an order of judgment. And my lords will have seen reference to what we say is the source of the jurisdiction of this court. Um to hear appeals from the um High Court, section sixteen of the Senate Courts Act. And I certainly haven't been able to find any other um source of the power of this court. Um to hear um arguments um from the court below. The four cases referred to in the um appellant's um. Skeleton argument, which we also refer to in our skeleton argument. Really are not on point. And perhaps the best point I can make in relation to all of those authorities is that the issue which we now take here wasn't taken. So. In, in rem, um Baron Hill identified um the, the issue. Um that this really was an appeal against reasons, but all of the parties were content um for the court. Um, um to proceed um on the basis that um the court um had jurisdiction. But there was no real argument about um whether or not the court um had jurisdiction. There was no reference, as it were, to um Lake and Lake. And, and the same um goes for all of the authorities apart from Curtis and, and London Rent Assessment Committee case. And that, as my lord has already pointed out, um that was a case where there was going to be a remission to the committee. And therefore, strictly speaking, um that was part of the relief. That the um claimant in that, the success party in, in that um case was entitled to. Um, we're in a very different situation here.
Okay, can I just ask? Anyway, it's on the terms of the appellant's notice, um there's no reference to asking for damages. Supposing the appellant's notice had said, uh, we want just satisfaction, we want damages. Um, because the Article Eight claim should have been accepted. Um, could you then have argued this point?
My lord, yes, certainly in relation to the um Schedule Three.
Yes, I see.
Um, in relation to the um Article Eight point, um perhaps not. Um, but in any event, that was in matter dealt with by the judge below. And as I understand it, from my, um discussions with my learned friend, that is a standalone claim. So it doesn't rely anywhere on the interpretation um given by the judge below on Schedule Three. It stands on its own and that was certainly dealt with by the judge in, in, in that way.
Could it be said against you that the, that the order at page one A three, which is the crucial. Implicitly says the, the claimant's claim for. Damages for breach of E C H R rights is dismissed.
Yes. And I would have set that point if um the concession wasn't made that um the. Claim for um on the Article Eight falls with the um interpretation as it were, or the position in relation to um Schedule Three, paragraph three. Um, certainly, um the way the case was run at first instance. Was on the basis that this was a standalone claim, which is why the judge had to deal with it separately, um notwithstanding the.
E, e, E C H R was, was a standard.
Indeed, separately, notwithstanding the conclusion that he had reached on Schedule um Three of the two thousand and two Act.
The question of. Separate relief, particularly financial and the E C H R claim doesn't seem to have. Been large or possibly at all in the argument before the judge or reasoning.
Well, my, my lord, that's correct and um certainly towards the um end of the consideration of the Article Eight point. He does, and does, if you like, um make some observations in relation to what. Um, relief he might be, might have been prepared to um ward if um he had found in the appellant's um favour. But matters have moved considerably because um what the court should know is that since. Um, the decision at first instance, there has been um another assessment. Of the family on the section seventeen.
Yeah.
And the conclusion reached um in that assessment was that there was no further assistance to be provided um to the family. And that assessment has not been challenged. So i- i- in terms of um any um. Just satisfaction um argument that may be raised, we say, really, that is negligible. But in any event, that is superseded by the um outcome of the um assessment following the um judgment.
Sorry, just say that again.
I- in terms of any argument that there may be in relation to um damages for um just satisfaction. We, we say that is negligible in terms of quantum, but in any events superseded by the um. Subsequent assessment, which can, which concluded that no further assistance. And was to be offered to this family and that assessment stands, has not been challenged. My, forgive me. I was, I was simply going to address the um issue in relation to discretion.
Yes, please.
My, we, we say that um the um issue um raised um. Or the arguments raised in relation to um the interpretation of Schedule um Three, yes, important. But they have been looked at by a very experienced judge on two occasions. And, and we say there is no reason for this court now to engage in that debate in a case where frankly. I think accepted, it's ac- academic. Um, so the appellant has no interest in the point. And we certainly, as a local authority, have no interest in that point for present purposes. Which is why um our skeleton argument on that point is rather on the light side. And, and we respectfully submit that um if this court is going to um look at that. Um issue of interpretation, um then really there ought to be fuller arguments before this court than presently before it.
But if you came to it, well, you say, well, you find the reasoning and the judge's judgment, you agree with the judge's reasoning.
My lord, indeed, yes, we do. And, and finally, we say on this point that the um. What is consistent with the um C P R. Is for this court, if the time comes, to wait for a case where the issue is really relevant. And make a decision based on arguments which are timely and current. That's not the position that we have here. And therefore, we say the court should not exercise any discretion to um hear the appeal, even if the court. And accede to the um argument that there, there is jurisdiction to entertain the appeal.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Alomar. Mr. Cooper, an- anything to reply on jurisdiction and discretion?
Um, my lord, particularly on the point about the um, the pressure assessment. In terms of a certain parallel with the Curtis and Rent Assessment um case. Uh, this is a case where the judge quashed the decision, so there had to be another assessment. That was done and the problem that we've had is that we've been caught in the coils of developments. Where they then get status, which then makes that become historic or academic in terms of.
And you've got to say caught in the coils, and from the family's point of view, that's a, that's a very good outcome.
No, it's a very good outcome, but in terms of looking backwards at how they were treated and the question of that. Then that brings the case into not only jurisdiction, but academic territory where they seem to coincide. Merge, but here, um the point is, is that with the um, the jurisdiction aspect. I can't take it any further than what I've said in relation to the.
I can't take it any further than what I've said in relation to the point about the Article Eight aspect. That was a discreet point, but there was some interplay with the statutory interpretation point regarding that. Which was mentioned by the judge, but in relation to the discretion issue, um really that the situation is one where. This case raised that in terms of the legal question, simply on the basis of. The basic elements that needed to be in play, i.e. an overstayer falling within Paragraph Seven. And then the question of how that is uh interpreted in relation to Schedule Three and Paragraph Three. And here, the question would be one of looking at how that affected the family in the past. But looking at others going forward, that's as that's as high as that can be put in terms of what the court can do.
Yes. Right, thank you both very much, we'll retire to consider where we go from here.
It's like, well, yeah, it's a wrong drug, what do you want me to say? Most people, I mean, if you think about the Chamberlain, when we did the wrong drug, he. He didn't just say, get on with it. That's what the wrong drug is genuinely, but hey, you've got this intersection between those two aspects. It's making it very difficult to listen to, it's just ridiculous. Oh, did you have a similar situation? But I think I think the good thing for us is that if they decide, I think there is a jurisdiction. And it's academic, and they should accept this, the the canvas is still open.
Exactly.
And nobody has got, we haven't got anything negative. So just, you know, get, just get.
Yeah.
Take it off. But I just want you to know, I was trying to, you know, just cower down for that reason, but I think, you know, you've got to read the music.
Yeah.
Be smart about it as well.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I think that's the right way to do it. Well, this, yeah, I mean, it surprises me, I would have thought, why on earth, just put it in for an interim hearing? I mean, I suppose that's what means, they they cost. But they didn't do any of the law chances, yeah, but I mean, it's it's like, you know, they didn't exactly do us a gap in the argument, it looked like.
Well, that's what that's for.
I I think they were just thinking, look, there's a shortcut for it. Was the previous uh court justice mode? I think, yeah, is he experienced or I don't know, because I think he's a young university, so maybe it's just lack of confidence. Yeah, on his part. Okie dokie. They will, yes, yeah, I mean, definitely, I was just hoping that, you know. You guys could get some before this hearing, so I can say to them, we've got something to play with, and they want to be a little bit. I think they're just, they're just thinking, look, you've got a good. In terms of, you know.
Is the live stream free? Can they can they hear us? Don't worry.
We were saying nice things.
Court rises able?
Mr. Kober, a second, I'm afraid we're against you, we we will refuse permission to appeal. Um, we won't attempt to give oral reasons today, we'll give. Reasons to follow in the usual way. Um, seems to us an 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 order can nevertheless be drawn up. Um, we assume that the as to costs, the. Appellant is legally aided and um uh. The usual order with the reviser protecting the legally aided appellant should be made unless either of you. Wants to submit otherwise. Um, substantive order is simply that permission to appeal from Judge Tyndall's. Order of whatever date it was is refused.
It's the fifth of February twenty twenty five.
Thank you very much.
Page one A three.
We're we're grateful to both for the succinct oral submissions this morning and for the. Uh, written submissions as well. Yes, will 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 you, between you, draft an order and submit it? Shouldn't take long. Thank you. When we send out the reasons, as as you know, it's. Send them out in the usual way for uh correction of any factual errors, typists and so on. Not for the argument of the case, uh but the 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 fact that the um. That permission to appeal has been refused, um can of course be made public. Thank you very much.